Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to Order for Monday, September 14th, 2020. Could I have a roll call, please, Ms. Gunther?
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
Mary Waite.
Here.
John Noons.
Yep.
Thank you very much, everyone. As a reminder, per Governor Bicasada suspending certain provisions of open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. The meeting will be conducted remotely. Members of the public can access the meeting via livestream at youtube.com/dhtvmedia. In addition, the event will be rebroadcast in DCTV Channels 9 and 18 on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 p.m., Friday at 6:00 a.m., Saturday at 8:00 a.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. School Committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. And of course, as always, we thank Mr. Rob Parodi of our media program at Dartmouth High School and Dartmouth Community Television. At this time, we do have a time allotted for public comment. We typically allow 10 minutes for public comment, and anyone wishing to comment on any of tonight's agenda items, you can do so by emailing our recording secretary, Kathleen Gunther, at dartmouthschools.org. And Ms. Gunther, do you have any emails on public comment to date?
I did receive two, which were forwarded to the school committee during the day.
Perfect. Thank you very much. As soon as the meeting minutes are approved for tonight's meeting, you know, at the following meeting or whenever the minutes are ready to be approved, those emails will become part of tonight's record. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes of September 1st, 2020.
Move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair Haringdon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Roll call.
Chris Oliver.
I will abstain.
Shannon Jenkins.
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral.
Yes.
Mary Waite.
Yes.
John Noons.
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of September 1st, 2020.
So move, Mr. Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete?
Second.
Once again, I have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Gunther.
Chris Oliver.
I will abstain.
Shannon Jenkins.
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral.
Yes.
Mary Waite.
Yes.
John Noons.
Yes.
And thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Gunther. At this time, we have a consent agenda item, fundraising activities for the DSMA. Dr. Gifford?
Yes, Mr. Oliver, I believe you have received the number of items, the things that they're looking forward to, to have us fundraisers. And Director of Music is here, along with, I believe, we call him the President of DSMA, and to answer any questions you have on that. But we do recommend approval of those items.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Gifford. And Mr. Benoy?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to welcome you to the school committee meeting, and all the committee members have received this in their packet. Do any of my fellow members have any comments or questions regarding this? Dr. Jenkins?
First, I just want to say thank you to everyone. I know, just from the limited time that I've been on here, we've asked for, you know, just some detailed reporting, not to say anything fishy going on, but just because we are a public body approving your budget, and I think this is maybe the most detailed budget we've ever seen, so I definitely really appreciate it. Of course, with details comes questions, and this is not so much a question for me, but I just want to ask you about this, so the public can understand. Can you explain the role of consultants in the organization? I think with the band and the percussion, because you do, I know it's part of what you do, but you spend a good bit of money on that. And so I think just for the public's sake, having a little explanation of what those expenditures go to would be helpful.
Yeah, so in the fall, the marching bands, you know, part of the class that we do. So the marching band is integrated in with the curriculum for the high school concert band class. So the school pretty much funds 100% of the staffing for that, because that makes total sense, since it's part of the class. Then when we get to the winter season, we have our winter percussion ensemble and our indoor color guard. Many of the costs from that, because they are, they're extracurricular activities, get passed along to DSMA to kind of cover that. We list people as consultants, but many of those people are what we have as educators in the fall. So it's the same staff, pretty much across the board. You might find a couple new names that are different designers for the winter season, because we have a couple specialists that'll, you know, work with the group as designers for the percussion and color guard. Pretty much it's the same educators you see in terms of personnel on the ground, it's the same people all year, just the expenses that's shared between the school department and the DSMA throughout the entire school year.
Dr. Jenkins, do you have any further questions or any comments?
No, I'll just point out, thanks. I appreciate that, right? I'm a broken record about these sorts of things, but I will be a broken record here, talking about the extent to which many of the activities in our school rely on private funding, not taxpayer dollars, and this is just an example of this. You know, it's great that the schools are able to fund, you know, the classes as they should, but you know, lots of other activities and stipends are, you know, provided for the coaches and whatnot. And so I appreciate the role that you guys play in helping us fund that, and that sort of excellence that comes with, you know, the band and the color guard and percussion is in part, large part funded by private money. So thank you for that.
Anyone else have any comments or questions regarding this? I will just say, yeah, no, I agree with my colleague, Dr. Jenkins. This is very helpful. This was the best I feel as well to date. It just amazes me the amount of fundraising DSMA does in, you know, what you do for our students. So thank you to all the parents out there, and for everyone that's involved with DSMA and for supporting the Dartmouth School Music, Dartmouth High School Music Program. At this time, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the fundraising activities as presented from the Dartmouth School Music Association.
Second.
So I have a motion by Dr. Jenkins, a second by Mrs. Amaral. On the motion, any other discussion? Perfect. Chair Haringdon, roll call, please.
Chris Oliver.
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins.
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral.
Yes.
Mary Waite.
Yes.
John Noons.
Since my wife's a lecturer, I think I'll abstain.
Thank you very much, everyone. And thank you for everyone from DSMA and from Mr. Flint for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Russ. Thanks, Ian.
Next up, under Old Business, turn it over to Dr. Gifford for superintendent's update on the start of school.
Sure, thank you. Old Business, it seems like we've been living this forever, right? But just so you know, we had, all of us have been in and out of the schools all week. Obviously, the teachers have been in for the last two weeks with professional development, learning about the safety, the health and safety protocols being put in place, preparing their classrooms. I actually was in a number of them today, especially the programs where the students will be returning tomorrow, and spirits were high. People were excited to be thinking about welcoming their students back tomorrow. We, just as a reminder, starting tomorrow, our students, our pre-K students whose IEPs require them to be enrolled in our integrated PK program, as well as our students who are enrolled in the PAST, PASS, and PALS programs, will be returning to school in person. And as I said, those classrooms are ready to go with lots of different things for our kids. Obviously, I know people will probably have more questions for Mr. Kylie in a minute about PPE. We said we're so tired of talking about it, but it's important, we know. We did have another meeting with Dr. Bromage this week. We invited our nurses, related services, pre-K teachers, folks that were going to have close contact with kids and immediately. So it was a good, another good session. He actually came to the high school. We had that in the auditorium, and I think folks had, had a lot of questions answered. So I'm hoping that helps people continue to feel comfortable and confident about kids returning to school. I do want to mention, obviously, we've had a lot of information going back and forth about the TECA program, and I am putting out a Facebook post in a little bit when we get, just to update folks on just what we're talking about here. And as a reminder, the district is still required to provide education for folks that choose not to come to school, as well as those that do. This has been quite an undertaking. Anybody that's working in education knows, because it's very complex. Not only if people choose a virtual program, for example, we still have special education needs, whether it's inclusion minutes, C grid minutes, program minutes. To be able to properly staff and meet, staff those kinds of programs for all needs and meet the needs is, again, quite complex, but we're doing the best we can at this point. So with the last-minute information that came from the Department of Ed, we were waiting for quite a while for them to come up with their platforms that they were going to offer districts, that they were partnering with companies to offer districts the best quality programs that they, they felt were good quality programs that aligned with the Massachusetts, offered curriculum that aligned with the Massachusetts frameworks, et cetera. As you know, we've discussed before, the more up-to-date information came quite late and wasn't quite what we had in mind. With that said, we did make decisions. We chose Edgenuity as the platform for the high school. It's a very self-directed program curriculum that students will be with, with the high school staff guiding them, especially Mr. Gil, the Assistant Principal, on making sure they choose the correct course pathways and have the courses that they need. Those students will be enrolling in the Edgenuity program. The TECA program we chose for the middle school, at first, we thought we would do Edgenuity, but I know we had a few questions on why we changed. We fell, along with the middle school staff, that that was the absolute best program, given the two virtual options we had, because it did offer certified teachers to guide and offer at least two live lessons a week for the courses. The middle school staff, the admin team didn't feel that leaving middle school students kind of on their own and more of an independent course pathway with Edgenuity, that that was not the best option, that we wanted to offer the kids a little bit more supervision and real teachers on the other end. With that said, the guidance department will continue to monitor those students, maintain connections. We want to make sure they stay on board, they keep, keep up with their lessons, et cetera, because as I've said before, these are still our students. They're not unenrolled from Dartmouth Public Schools, so they're still on our rolls. The middle school is also making it clear that any student, whatever we come up with, if we have after-school programs, a club or something like that, and that is virtual, that they can attend, will, they absolutely would be welcome to attend those kinds of things. And the elementary, we love it there. We did, because we had grant funding, it's not endless, but we chose to hire Dartmouth teachers, new Dartmouth teachers, to have staff the K through 5 elementary virtual program. So again, these kids are choosing not to come to school at all. We ended up with five teachers. We just couldn't find a qualified teacher that we felt comfortable with for grade 5, so we have K through 4. With that said, we had to make some decisions and reassign some folks in the district to pick up some of those classroom hours for our grade 5. So those were coaching positions that will be split between two, two coaches at this point, and then they'll be doing their regular coaching the rest of their day. As I indicated previously, we also had to shift a few other people's responsibilities, a part of their schedules, to assign them some duties or responsibilities with students, knowing that we don't have an endless ability to hire staff, so we have to reallocate staff as, as best as we can to make sure our students' needs are met. So those teachers have been up and running. We did provide a stipend to one teacher for an after-school, before and after-school, kind of like a mentor, monitor, coordinator, we called it, just to be able to make sure they have everything they need and have constant communication with them, as well as if parents called to kind of help those teachers out. I think all but one of them are very, very brand-new teachers. So that's, that, we did receive an email finally from the TECA group today, after many attempts over the weekend, last week, et cetera. It's been pretty hard to get in touch with them or receive responses, unfortunately, but the latest today was that parents will be receiving their, their information tonight. Unfortunately, I wanted it today. The first thing was today, and now that's what I've gotten now. So I am going to put that out in the Facebook thing. Again, I understand parents' frustration. We are as frustrated as they are. Mr. Kylie, do you want to add anything about the PPE? Because we've had a lot more going on with that as well.
Sure, yeah. We have. We've distributed more than 27,000 pieces of, of PPE and/or related items around the district to be ready. So, you know, we have, we have what we need. We have more still coming in that'll only enhance what we're doing and provide backup stock for us, but we're, we're in, I think, in good shape. We're looking at HEPA filters. We've ordered, ordered three orders of HEPA filters, and I expect to have two orders in this week. Those will be the first ones we have. Those need to be first installed in the nurse's office and in the isolation space, and then will be provided also to staff who have medical conditions, what's requiring the HEPA filters. So we're working on that. And yeah, it's been, it's, it's been incredibly busy getting prepared and ready to operate in a whole new way. And
Do you want to add a little bit about the lunch program that you've got planned?
Sure. So it was, it was nice that the USDA approved free, the continuation of free food from what we, what we had from the spring for kids. So what we are working on is, obviously, we're going to have food for kids that are starting tomorrow and moving forward in the schools. And then October 1st, we will start both supplying food for students in school, food for them to bring home for the next day, and because they won't be in school the next day. It's every other day on the hybrid plan. So they'll have food for that and food for kids who are remote. So if, if kids are fully remote, we haven't quite nailed down an exact time of day how that would work, that distribution. It won't be the same as we did before, because 11 to 1 probably isn't going to work for those families at this point, given how this whole is involved. But we will provide hours that hopefully will be easier for families to access, so that they can get food at home. And until December 31st, the USDA has stepped up and funded that. So food will be available for all kids, free.
That's great, Mr. Kylie.
I think that's about it. As I said, we're, the teachers I spoke to today and TAs, et cetera, run the buildings, and this week, they're, they're looking forward to the kids coming back. I think, I think once they come, come in, it'll start to really feel good for them, and people will start to feel much more comfortable and ready to go. So that's our update for our opening at this point.
Well, thank you, Dr. Gifford. Thank you, Mr. Kylie. I'll start off with a couple of things. First off, hats off to Mr. Tebow. I thought his, his communication with the parents were very well done. My first experience here, my, my youngest daughter's going into Dartmouth High. She's a freshman, so I thought the communication coming from the high school was extremely well done. And look, she's very, I'm sure, just like a lot of the high school students, looking forward to getting started with remote learning. I still think that Dartmouth made the right decision, starting the year off fully remote and slowly transitioning into a hybrid program. Let's follow the TECA program at the, at the middle school. Yes, I, I feel the parents' frustrations. I feel the administration's frustrations, and it's, it's very difficult. I'm really disappointed with Department of Education, as well as TECA, and their lack of communication to the school districts. It's so unfortunate. I think they could have done much better with the communication. I wish that we would have known in Dartmouth a little bit more about the program. However, you know, we, we just didn't have the information that we really need. However, I'm hopeful with that last communication, Dr. Gifford, that you said that you've got some more information from them, that we can get that out in a timely fashion to the parents that are desperately waiting for, for those emails from TECA. I just, you know, urge the parents, as much as, I'm sure you're running out of patience, to have patience. We're in just a very untimely and unfortunate, you know, period in our lives, and we'll get through this. But as soon as we have the information, we will get it out to you. That, Dr. Gifford and administration has assured, has assured me that, has assured us that, that we're, we're on top of this as much as we can, but we can only do so much because this is in the hands of both TECA and the Conexus platform, which is run by Pearson Online Learning. I really wish, Dr. Gifford, that we could do an in-house academy like we're doing at the elementary school, because I, I, props to, to everyone in the Dartmouth Public Schools for, for that initiative, for that initiative, because I think that, that's, that's wonderful that, I think that's going to pay dividends in the end, us handling our virtual learning academy in-house at the elementary level. I think that's really going to be a positive experience. Can you tell me, Dr. Gifford, do we have someone, a teacher at every grade level? Are there multiple teachers? How exactly is that playing out?
We have a new teacher at all the grade levels except grade 5, so we're splitting that, like I said, between two of our existing teachers. They're coaches, actually. So we've disseminated, we've given them each a, a few hours of the day to provide instruction for grade 5 students. So the grade 5 students will have two teachers. Yeah, but the rest, it's one. And the, just so you know, the numbers, we've actually had, and this is just a little bit of an estimate, you know, not precise at this moment, but as of today, approximately 75 students chose TECA. It was actually more than I thought would be. Around 50 at the high school right now with the Edgenuity, and 148 at the elementary level.
Wow.
Great kudos to Ms. Olivera, once again, despite everything she's been involved in. Whenever we started talking about this, she, I think it's going to kill her, or I don't know, but she's been wonderful organizing this, hiring the teachers. We actually went through about 90 applicants, believe it or not, for these positions, and about 40 phone calls, inviting people to interview for the positions. We laughed. I said, I, I was teasing, and I said, I think I saw her on the street waving a lady down to see if she wanted. But she worked really hard with that, and that's why in the end, you know, she, to handle the whole thing and the day-to-day was going to be absolutely impossible. So we did offer a stipend to another teacher, just to help with that. And also, of course, these new teachers will have a regular mentor, as usual. They're all housed, I don't know if I mentioned this, at Quinn. Yes, they, they're all housed at Quinn in the big music room. We had to kick Will out, but we, they found a spot for him. The big music room at Quinn also has two rooms off of it, like small, maybe half the size of my office. So we're setting them up as best we can, getting the materials, partitions hopefully around their desk, so they're all socially distanced. And I talked to a few of them today. They were also out helping, which I was going to mention in my update, so I might as well just mention it. Mr. Galishore and the tech team, of course, has been, have been phenomenal with dissemination of Chromebooks. I think they were still over there tonight. They've been in on Saturdays and Sundays to get these Chromebooks out and organize, inventoryed and out. I've met Jonathan here on Saturdays and said, you know, go home kind of thing, and, but those virtual teachers were all running around with pack. I don't think they knew what they were doing yet, but, you know, they're so young and we're so excited to have them, but they were all there helping.
Willing to help. That's excellent.
Yeah, nice bags of, you know, books and materials and things for those kids who parents were coming through, picking everything up. So like you said, you know, it's, we've had some growing pains for sure, especially with the TECA piece, but I know we'll get through it. We have a great staff, and I, I just know it'll be better as time goes on, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. And then also, just thank you for the update, Mr. Kylie, in regards to the PPE and just getting, having the buildings ready to go. I know that took a lot, a lot to make that happen. So are, are we pretty comfortable at this point that we've done as much as we possibly can from, from a district standpoint, that we're, we're pretty comfortable with, you know, opening up the buildings and moving forward with what we have in place?
I think so. I mean, I, I think there's always more you can do, and we are doing more, like, for instance, those HEPA filters and getting those in place and installed, so that, there is always more that you can do. But I think we have the PPE to support a healthy, safe environment for folks. So I think if people follow the guidelines and practice good social distancing and use good hygiene, and, you know, I think, I think that we're ready. Yeah, we're excited. I can't wait to see kids in buildings.
Agreed. Well, thank you, everyone. Dr. Jenkins?
I just want to follow up, and, you know, first, I want to say thank you to everyone. I know how hard you all have been working, both in the administration, the building staff, the teachers getting ready. I don't think the public sees that. I mean, we're all nervous, but I'm, I'm not sure how hard, they know how hard you're working. So I just want to say thank you for that. I also want to really reiterate what Mr. Kylie said about how important it is for us to follow the rules. Two stories today. Lincoln Sudbury and I think Dover Sherbin have had to go remote. There have been large parties of teenagers not following social distancing. They can't social contact, a contact trace, and so they've had to throw their plans out, you know, out the window at the last minute. It is on all of us to do this. And, you know, I've been through a few buildings, and I think we saw it too the other last meeting. It's every minute of every day that everyone has to do this. It is on us. And I really can't reinforce that enough, particularly to the parents who are watching. Kids will be kids, right? Their brains are not quite fully developed, right? So we've got to do the best we can to stay on top of them. It's hard. I know I have two teenagers, but it, but it really is on us. I want to follow up on the, the TECA issue. I do think it was the right choice, having gone through sort of remote learning with my kids and seeing what it takes for them to be self-directed learners without any support. I think going with some, you know, instruction, you know, synchronous is, is a, is a good thing, and is the right choice ultimately in the long haul. I do think, both with TECA, and I think with everything, there's going to be kinks working out over these first couple of weeks. And I think it might go a long way to reassure parents if there are some communications, particularly from teachers, from administrators, you know, that we're going to hold people harmless. I mean, I know I talked to you, Dr. Gifford, you said Walter lost his, his, you know, internet in the middle of a negotiation. I, our internet went out in our house unexpectedly, like, things are going to happen. And so I think what parents need to hear is, right, some reassurance that, like, we want everything from TECA to be there and in place, but if it takes you, you know, some time tomorrow morning, we'll figure it out, right? And I think some reassurance to parents that, like, you know, we are going to, we're all in this together, would, would, I think, be very helpful, particularly coming from teachers and building administrators, because I think that's a lot of what the anxiety is about. We don't know what this will look like. We're worried it's going to fall apart, right? On our, I know, at least on my end personally, I think there's a lot of worry about that. So I think a lot of reassurance going out to parents that we're going to help you. um, that we're gonna help you and your kids, not, you know, you didn't turn something in, you weren't there. I think that, that sort of reassurance would be very helpful to parents.
Yeah, I agree. And also, uh, one of the things, this latest email that, again, hopefully they said everything will be going out as of tonight, um, and they gave a contact name for parents, but also that it said, what I read was they said not for parents to worry because the children won't be behind. So whatever they do to get them going and, you're right, so that's important.
Yeah, I think that's really important to get that out in communication to ease parents. Um, anyone else? Uh, Mrs. Amroth.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? I'm getting that little sign that says my internet is unstable. Um, this is just incredible. This is, I just can't even, um, and to Shannon's point, I don't think that some of the parents in the district understand the, the level of, of planning and thought. I mean, well, they do, of course, but you know, they're at the point now where that worry is setting in, that anxiety around, I think I said earlier, like, just gonna let Jesus take the wheel, like, we're, we're all eventually gonna get there. Um, I guess, uh, to that point, actually, I've been seeing, and I haven't really looked today, so I don't know if the things are resolved, but I've seen a lot of parents commenting that they don't know what to do tomorrow. They don't, whether they're, some of them were elementary, I'm thinking some were middle school, and I'm sure there was some high school that they just don't know where to, I'm, I'm talking about the remote folks. Um, they don't know where to log in. Um, any suggestions aside from, I'm thinking as a parent, maybe checking your spam folder, updating your Aspen, making sure that your notify, you know, your emails are all up to date and accurate. Um, any suggestions as to what they may do, um, to rectify this prior to tomorrow? Would it be contacting the principal? Um, I don't know if these, I've seen a lot of messages and I've just been very busy. Um, don't know if they received an initial, you know, notification from the teacher or not. Assume they haven't. What, what should they do?
Trying to think about each level. Um, uh, let me think about that, only because the different levels and who's in charge of, and I'm trying to think of who would give them the best information.
Right.
You know, send to one, then they call Bush Street, then they call back to the school. So let me just think about that and whether I put, um, I am updating an, um, a Facebook message for tonight.
Okay.
More. Um, but there was something you just mentioned that one thing I know, and again, whether every single child had the opportunity or every single teacher, we had a lot of teachers doing those virtual meet and greets these past few days, so, um, you know, I checked in with a lot of them that said, yes, they had gotten all their kids, et cetera. So hopefully that helped most folks, but sure, there probably are some that somehow something was missing, but, um, yeah, let me think about that and put it in the Facebook message for, in a little bit after this meeting, because it'll be different levels. And like I said, I just want people to have the right information.
Best information.
Yeah.
That's helpful. Um, yeah, it's sort of, uh, it's just, I don't know. Um, and, and you mentioned the, just for my own clarification, I just was wondering, so those, those fifth grade virtual academy positions, which we couldn't fill, we, you, the qual, you know, you didn't find, um, candidates that, to fill those spots. The coaches are certified teachers?
Yes, yep. Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, and, um, I saw a picture online, um, of a preschool classroom, which was very cute. Uh, I'm wondering, um, Mr. Kuzma, this is Mr. Kylie. Thank you for answering the PPE questions. I don't wanna come at you with many. Um, um, you mentioned like, uh, the Plexiglas. Is that for like the isolation station, or is that in those classrooms with those kiddos who can't maintain space and may possibly, most likely don't wear masks? Are, is that going in the classrooms as well?
There's, yeah, there, there's different applications for Plexiglas where it can be useful in this case, obviously. Like you, like you have in the stores where there's Plexiglas around a workstation, so, um, you know, there are instances where we've installed sort of custom, custom-made, uh, by our maintenance guys. Shields around people's workstations that are high-traffic areas to protect them and protect others. Um, but then there's Plexiglas shields for classrooms. The ones that I originally bought are sort of a heavy-duty, thick Plexiglas, um, and they're very sturdy and strong, but they're also fairly heavy. And they're either designed for a table or a desk. Um, and they are, so when someone is gonna be working in close proximity, uh, to a student, can't maintain that social distance, it's a barrier there. Um, there's, there's, in the DESI guidance, there's a recommendation to, you know, avoid using, uh, Plexiglas. Um, based on the fact that it's another surface to clean. Um, so it's, it's not really something that'll be left with a student on a desk, but it can be used when working with a student. Um, so for close proximity, uh, they vary in size. I have some more that are coming, uh, that I should have this week that are trifold and very lightweight. So the ones I have are sturdy and pretty heavy. Um, so these are very lightweight and can be, are, are less, less of an issue if it were to fall off the table or, you know, so, so I have, um, an ample supply of those on the way, but I think, uh, taking some time to understand how everybody's going to use them. But, yeah, I can get a hundred out there in, in, in different classrooms right now. Uh, and we're gonna have a hundred more that I've ordered that are the lighter weight.
And as things go, you're gonna figure out where they're most needed.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think there'll be, I, my belief is, it, I don't think it should be one on every student's desk. It's when a, when someone needs to work with a student in close proximity. I don't think it's great to leave it on a desk, because to be honest, I think it's just gonna get blown off the desk at some point.
Yeah.
Accidentally, somebody's gonna lean up against it or, you know. So I, I'm not, I'm not a fan of that, but, um, but the lighter weight ones, there's less risk of that. They're, they're, you know, they would never hurt anybody or anything, so.
I'm thinking of those kids. I might know one who might think it's Hetland Arena and starts, you know, not Plexiglas.
Right.
So, not, you know, not to mention any names, but I might live with one. Um, yeah, no, I, I don't know that I have any more, um, more questions. I appreciate the comments around the holding the kids harmless. It's really important. A lot of parents are worrying about that. Um, I guess, yeah, I guess I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Amroth. Mr. Nunes or Mrs. Wade have anything else to add? Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, a couple of things. Number one, uh, again, I know kinda like a broken record because everybody's doing it, but it, it, it goes without saying, the, uh, the job that, you know, starting with central office right down to, uh, custodians in the building, uh, the work, and, you know, and again, the teachers, administrators and everyone else in between, uh, all the work that they have done to get these schools up and going. Uh, it has been phenomenal. And my hat's off to them. Um, a couple of, a, a couple of thoughts, I mean, in all seriousness, uh, I think, yeah, everybody's gotta take a step back and take a deep breath, and this is all new territory for everybody. And I think, uh, you know, there's gonna be some bumps in the road as, as we go forward with this the first few days, and even when we get into October and we get into the, the hybrid, uh, situation, the hybrid schedule. So I think if everybody just, you know, takes a deep breath and takes a pause for a second and you know, lets everything, you know, lets the situations work out and the problems, it'll all get fixed and everybody will, everybody will be fine. And just to go along with what, you know, Dr. Jenkins said, and I, you know, two things. Number one, I think the parents have gotta be involved in. Number two, in all seriousness, they're high school students or elementary or middle school students. You know, I mean, think before you jump. You know, I mean, don't go, you know, someplace without a, without a mask. Do your social distancing. And, you know, don't be in a party with five hundred other kids so that we end up like a Dover Sherborn or a Lincoln Sudbury or a Pontigan Sid in Rhode Island type of deal. We don't need those problems, okay? And nobody does, so if this is gonna, you know, run smooth, you know, we need everybody on board to, uh, to do their part, so that's all I'm asking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. And last but not least, Mrs. Wade.
Hi. Um, so yes, I have to like echo what everyone else has said. You know, it's been a phenomenal job that everyone has done in our district. And I have to say, like, I, I, you know, I sent an email to Dr. Gifford too, saying, you know, just this, that, like, I really feel that our plan is a great plan. It's the best plan, the slow start. I think coming into the AB hybrid is going to, um, you know, make the best transition for our students, is going to provide like, you know, emphasis on teaching and learning. So I feel really good about where we are. Um, you know, again, I also have gotten those emails to, about TECA like everyone else did. I was, you know, back and forth with Kate and with Dr. Gifford and, and with parents. Um, so I'm also crossing my fingers that that will get straightened out and, and again, holding those families harmless, of course, you know, but I think in those cases, those families aren't so much wor, they just want their children to make sure that they get, you know, their proper days. They're not worried about, you know, the being held harmless per se, as much as just making sure that, you know, they can get off to a good start. And I think that's going to happen and, you know, to John's point, Mr. Nunes's point, it's going to be, you know, possibly rocky at times, but I think of those freshmen, you know, my son's a freshman too, you know, coming in. I would have to imagine he would be a little rocky on a normal freshman day, just like he was entering sixth grade. Um, so I'm, you know, trying to take that, you know, patience as a parent. Um, I will say that, you know, families, again, there's a lot of, you know, to get back to Kathleen's point, uh, there's a lot of anxiety, um, and you know, I've heard from parents who are worried about having multiple children who are, you know, trying to operate in the same space, and they're taking the communications, which were excellent from Mr. Tebow and others, about saying, you know, don't sit up in your bedroom really to heart. And I think, again, like, I would say to parents, you know, after speaking with Dr. Gifford, again, you know, what, I think what really is meant by that is creating a professional space. Now, you know, if you have a setup in your bedroom, that's a desk and it's quiet, it's uncluttered, can't speak for my house, but you know, generally uncluttered and structured, that works. I, and again, Dr. Gifford said, but they don't wanna have happen is kids sprawled across their beds, like, you know, eating popcorn and you know, being distracted. So I think, again, like, parents are taking these things, you know, they really wanna start off well, so to heart, and they're thinking, I have four kids sitting around a table with different schedules. How is that going to look in practice? Um, so again, I, I think, again, getting back to easing that anxiety, um, is important. And, and again, I think a lot, my two, my brother's two children down in North Carolina have been in remote for a month. Um, and, you know, again, same thing, once they got started, you know, knowing when the next class was, it, it really started to flow. I think, and again, it's anxiety coming up. It's been good to hear their you know, path, because it does, you know, make it easier to kind of anticipate what will be in front of us. And I think once we get past this first couple of days, we'll feel a lot better. But again, like, I'm really grateful. I hope we can kinda get, um, again, TECA squared away. Um, but another, one other thing before, um, I leave off, is that I know that those parents of remote, uh, or excuse me, the parents were going virtual for the year, have also said that they wanna make sure that their students are still part of this community. So they're very concerned about the clubs and the athletics, and I know we've kinda said that, you know, we're not gonna leave those children out or punish them, but, you know, we wanna kinda make sure that they're involved as part of the community, so, um, you know, all those links to kinda getting into the clubs and when that, you know, comes into, uh, where we can explain, you know, that, that access to the high school or the middle school, I think that would be really helpful for them, so. Um, but I'll leave off. So again, thank you.
Uh, Shannon?
I, I just wanna follow up on, on something that Mary said, and, and, and I get that our recommendations for kids to not be in beds and, and be in an ordered place are recommendations. Um, we've been having a debate about this for a long time in higher education, um, about this. Um, it's really a privilege to have a quiet space or a table, um, that is not your bedroom where you can study. So I hope that we do not enforce that upon children. For some children, a bedroom, maybe it's messy, is the only place that they can go. Maybe they're sharing a house with, you know, ten other family members. It happens. Right? Um, I do hope that is what we prefer, but I hope that no teacher or administrator will punish kids, um, for lack of access to a quiet space, um, lack of access to a clean space, right? Um, not every family is privileged enough to afford that. And I think we have to be really comfort, really careful about, um, what we're doing, because when we're in a school, one's in the same environment, right? And there's no difference sort of in privilege in that school classroom. Um, but it very much is, and so I hope that we're just really sensitive to it. And also, you know, we've been having a lot of conversation too, um, you know, at the university level about, you know, cameras on, and um, there can be a lot of, uh, emotional anxiety around that. Um, and I do know, I do think we should have kids, but I hope that we support um, some of those kids in terms of, we've had a huge focus on social and emotional learning, um, that when kids are having issues with that, that we provide the sorts of supports to them that they need. Um, because we well know that that social, emotional aspect of learning is so fundamentally important. Um, so I wanna make sure, I'm sure we are, but I just really wanna come at this from a place of compassion, not a place of, of punishment, and to try to understand where kids are, um, and help them, whatever environment they have. Um, have a good year.
Uh, to your point, Shannon, um, I agree. Uh, I think it's important to note, though, um, we did, you know, the committee did expect and show our expectations to Dr. Gifford, uh, more robust learning, um, environment and a more robust, um, star, uh, remote star, unlike what we did in the springtime. Um, so I agree. I think setting the expectations, um, you know, cause I, I've heard stories about, and even with my own kids, um, of seeing student, other students in pajamas and i- in in bed. However, I get what you're saying and I agree with what you're saying, that not every family has, um, has a luxury of going into a, a, a small room or into a study room to, uh, to learn. So I thi, I think it's important, I agree, um, to just be cognizant of that, Dr. Gifford, across the board. And, and I think, um,
I'll, I'll just follow up on that, and I'll say as an educator, the clothes you wear don't really affect how you learn. Right? If you're in pajamas, you're in pajamas, you're still gonna learn. Right? And so we've see, I've seen like this all on social media, people saying you have to wear this kinda thing. You can't do this, right? You can't, you have to wear shoes and like, who's gonna expect if you're wearing shoes, right? Like, again, I, what we have to focus on, right, is yes, we need a robust education, but a robust education that recognizes that some kids are in learning environments, right? Um, that are not, they're not ours. They're not conducive to learning. So, um, let's focus on the things that, that are essential to learning and not worry so much about the things that are less essential.
I will, I will disagree with you with, I wouldn't expect my student to go to school with, in pajamas. Uh, I would expect, I wouldn't expect students to show up to a remote classroom in pajamas. I'll leave it at that. Uh, Mrs. Amroth.
Um, I'm, I, I just wanted to mention too, and I know you disagree with this, uh, but I heard from some families from the summer program, and um, I know that our program kids are going in-person learning, but many of our students who are not in programs but do require significant supports, um, are remote. And, uh, when you have a kiddo who, who i- is able to attend and model better in a classroom environment with, with very clear visual structured strategies and such, sometimes a parent cannot get that kid out to dress appropriately. Um, and sometimes getting them just to have a shirt on and sit in front of that screen is the best that they can do. And so to Shannon's point, I just hope that these conversations happen on an individual basis and that support is given and that, um, there isn't a blanket sort of, uh, requirement that, uh, because that might, it, believe me, there have been times in the summer that, that, um, yeah. I've had to skip.
I guess I should clarify myself. I don't think anyone should be penalized for this. Absolutely not. I just think there should be some kind of expectation, that's all. I, and everything should be dealt with on an individual basis. Did you have something, Mrs. Wade?
Did you? Yeah, I was, but I was gonna go down a slightly different. I, I had a question actually for about the PACE program at the high- Yeah, I was, but I was going to go down a slightly different, I, I had a question actually for about the PACE program at the high school. Just, and that was probably maybe more, Mr. Tebow isn't here. Um, but I had a parent asking, you know, hey, if my child, you know, and again, this gets back to being flexible because we're at home. You know, PACE is kind of, I always thought of as a time for kids to step back, process their days, you know, find some extra help, maybe have a snack, you know? So again, getting back into the new eating of food, you know, again, parents are reading all this and taking this very distinctive. But if, maybe if a child doesn't have, you know, some person that they need to speak with that day, maybe it'd be better for their, you know, social emotional well-being to go for a walk, you know, during that time. So these are, you know, again, like, kind of, we've, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of feedback from parents. Again, I think so many things will be mitigated once everything's in process, you know? And then again, I think from the schools too, you know, they'll be kind of thinking about things as things come up and adjusting. But, oh, you know, I, I guess I have questions about how that, are we going to make or have students sit during that PACE program? I mean, put PACE period, if they don't actually have someone, or can they just say like, I really need to get out and like, it's sunny out. Let me take those 15 minutes to like, for downtime, you know, I guess is, you know, again, that was my question.
No, that's, I, I think honestly, the, the word is flexibility. I think we, I think everyone needs to be flexible. While we can certainly have expectations, there needs to be flexibility and some kind of, you know, along that path. Would you agree, Dr. Gifford?
Sorry, I couldn't, as we know, the, the unmuting is terrible. The, the, I think from, um, as you know, during the regular school year, the kids sign up and they're accounted for when they go in PACE. Um, from my conversations with Mrs. Tebow, it's, it's, it's going to be a good opportunity for them to get that extra help or some of them just have those great relationships with teachers, but we're going to encourage them, but nobody to really take advantage of it. But no one's really going to chase them for it, if you get what I'm saying, you know? But for most kids, again, they have good relationships with some teachers. They might just want to tune in and converse and see how things are going. So while we are encouraging and expecting, uh, nobody's going to chase them around for it. Does that make sense? Like, the flexibility is there, put it that way.
I think that's important.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for that, uh, good conversation. Uh, anything else before we move on?
I just wanted to, yeah, as long as, um, Miss, a bunch of you just brought it up about, um, clubs and stuff, kids being, having that access. I think we still have a question about athletics, which again, I was just going to talk about in my update, but since you brought it up, um, I didn't know if the committee wants to have that conversation about kids. Some districts are not allowing them to participate if they're choosing virtual. Um, so, I mean, it's not that we have to have an official vote, but I think it's important that the committee comes to at least a consensus so that I can relay that information to the A D and, and parents will know. Because that has come up with questions from parents as well.
I'll, I guess I'll start on this, um, just based on some of the conversations that I've had, um, with representatives, uh, from virtual learning academies as well as, uh, Department of Education. And it is my understanding that even though our, while our students are participating in remote learning through TECA or through Ingenuity, they're still considered students of the Dartmouth Public Schools. We should be progress monitoring them. We should be, um, including them in any types of clubs, activities, and in my opinion, sports as well, because they are, um, they are members of our, our school community. Um, and that is basically what the, what Desi is, is saying, from my understanding, is that they are, they're our students and we're still responsible for them. We're just, we're, we're paying a tuition for them to take, uh, core classes remotely. Um, so I'm under the impression that they should be included. Dr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I 100% agree. I think all of our remote kids should have access to all of the normal sports, activities, whatever. Um, again, this is about empathy and flexibility and, um, their social emotional well-being. I 100% support them having access to anything and everything, um, that we offer.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Mrs. Wait?
Yes, and I'm going to echo what both of you said too. I mean, I said that before, that that was a concern of mine. And, um, you know, and I think it's good for our community too, because our goal is that after this year, these students will be coming back. And we want those bonds to stay strong between the students. So, you know, and we want those students to feel, you know, ownership over being part of our community. So, you know, I, I think we should. Now, again, it gets to sports and we talk about transportation, um, you know, and busing. There may be accommodations that, you know, in those cases, if those families have concerns, you know, that, and that's part, a large reason they chose remote, then maybe we allow those parents to drive their students to the sporting, you know, if it's a, you know, particular event, that competition, you know, and whatnot. So, um, again, I know we have a lot in front of us before we get to that piece, but, um, it could be a consideration as well. Again, you know, we'll get back to that word flexibility, but, um, that's what I'm thinking.
True. Thank you. Mr. Nunes?
Well, I guess, I, I know where I stand in this one. Uh, my answer is no. And I'll give you my reasons. Number one, if a student isn't attending school because they have some type of, uh, an illness or there could be an issue because of potential COVID problems or any other type, then they probably shouldn't be with adults and students in, in the classroom setting or anything of that nature. If the other, my other thought is that if the student just doesn't want to be in school or the parents don't want them because of the potential COVID issue or anything of that nature, I understand that that is their right. And I'm not objecting to that, but I don't think they should have the ability. If, you know, with all due respect, if it's not safe for them to be in school during the day, how is it going to be safe for them to be with their fellow students and coaches and such, you know, after school and the competitions and games and things of that nature? So I understand I'm a minority, so what else is new? But, uh, I think in, in all seriousness, that, that's kind of been in the back of my mind since, uh, this has all started. And, uh, I got it, you know, to keep them as part of the school system and everything else. But if, you know, with all due respect, they can't or will not attend our schools for whatever reason, then I'm sorry, but that's the consequences.
No, I, thank you, Mr. Nunes. I, I always appreciate your, uh, the firm ground you stand on. Kathleen?
Oh, I'm not muted, huh? I was being smiling silently, thinking I was muted. Um, usually I have to mute in this house. Uh, no, I, um, uh, I agree that each and every student should have the opportunity to, uh, participate in every aspect of the life of the school, all of our students. Um, and while I, I can understand where Mr. Nunes is coming from, I think my thought is in, um, presuming good intent in that those folks who really are, um, extremely worried due to significant medical issues would self, um, you know, remove themselves from the sport for this year. But, uh, I think that we should open it up to them, knowing that we will be, those events will be happening with proper, you know, social distancing and, and the, the regulations as they stand to be as safe as possible for each student. Um, but yeah, absolutely think that it is critical that all of our students are, um, offered and welcome to, um, try out and participate in anything that we offer that has to do with the life of the school.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Wait?
Yes, and not to, you know, extend, I think a lot of the, you know, and again, we're, some of our conversations is we focus around sports, but a lot of the clubs, if it's my understanding, they may start virtual too, as well as, you know, newspapers and things like that. So those are opportunities for those students to participate. You know, I'll think back to like Big Red News, which, you know, I helped run in this, you know, in the spring. That would be an opportunity for the middle school kids who are on remote, uh, as well as, you know, or I should say, like, who are working from home in the virtual, as well as our remote, then the hybrid students to all come together and be part of, you know, something like that. So those are the things, you know, I think that, you know, some of those parents, you know, to John's point, may well not, you know, feel comfortable doing sports, but there are other avenues that they want to still be, feel part of our community. So, um, you know, that, that is, is, is not just solely, you know, the athletics and the sports and the actual physical activities where they're getting together, but there'll still be some of those online pieces as well.
Great. No, thank you, Mrs. Wait. Uh, would you prefer a, a formal vote, Dr. Gifford, or is that good enough?
That's good enough.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted, once again, um, not anybody to be surprised at any decision we made. And, um, just want to let folks know so we can, the planning can go. And when parents have those questions, we have the answers. So that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next up, under new business, I'll turn it over to, uh, Ms. Roy, uh, School Committee Policy E B C F A on face coverings.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Uh, I'm going to start just explaining a little bit since it's our first policy of the year. But, um, what we do as a subcommittee is we review the Mass Association of School Committee policy model, and then we kind of work from there. So, um, on the face covering policy, again, I'm going to kind of go off a little bit and I'm going to read parts of this. Normally I just ask you to vote on this or, you know, take a first reading, because I think it's important for folks to hear some of this. So the policy was developed, um, following the guidance for, from the Center for Disease Control and the Department of Elementary and Secretary, uh, Education, um, guidances and the Department of, um, Public Health. So the first paragraph, actually, the second paragraph starts by defining the face covering, says having to cover the nose and mouth and be of multiple layers. Then it goes on to talk about the exemptions to the policy under certain circumstances, such as students with medical behavioral or other challenges, um, where, uh, who are unable to wear a mask and how this would be requiring a physician note for the exemption and principal approval, not just a parent signing a waiver to say, it's okay for my child to not wear a mask. Um, it talks about, um, students providing, uh, families providing face coverings for the students. Um, obviously we'll have some on site if, um, those are not, um, if they're not able to have them or if they forget to bring them in. And we're asking in that paragraph related to students bringing their own face masks, that we, um, strike out the second sentence related to staff members to better reflect what we are doing, which is that we will have staff, uh, mask available for staff as needed. Um, so they can bring their own or we will have them available. Um, and the final section goes on, talk about, um, any violations of the policy. And it talks about, you know, certain components, the principal or designated will consult with the parent or guardian to determine whether exemption is appropriate or the student may be removed from the school building for in-person learning until such time as they can comply with the requirement or the requirement is lifted. So they would, they would be removed to, um, our remote learning component or our virtual academy, or in some cases, TECA or Ingenuity. So those are the main highlights. Um, it does finish that the policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee. So I don't know if you have any questions, but we are asking for a vote tonight. If you feel comfortable with doing that, as we're slated to begin school shortly.
Great. Thank you very much for that, um, overview, Ms. Roy. Dr. Jenkins? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm in support of this. I just have a question about, um, the written note exemption. Um, I have some friends who are physicians and I have heard from them that parents are coming in, um, asking for mask exemptions, um, which they are not granting because there is no medical reason. Um, but I am concerned, right, that there will be perhaps some less scrupulous, um, physicians who are willing to do those things, given how politicized this has been. Um, and so my concern is if we only say, if we say just a note that that requires us, um, to accept that, and then what happens if we get, you know what I mean? If word gets out, oh, this doctor's writing notes, go ahead, you can get a note. Like we saw in medical marijuana, right, when it first became legal, everyone all of a sudden had a disease that required it, right? Um, so I don't wonder whether we want to have like a written note from the physician along with approval from administration, um, uh, under the expectation that nearly all of these will be, um, approved, but just so that we have that, um, capability, if any issues arise around this.
So it does say they must be approved by the building principal or designated. It does have that component in that first sentence of that paragraph.
Is that suitable, Dr. Jenkins?
Yeah. Um, that's fine. I think, so now that we've made that clear, I can see it, but I can see how a parent might say, I have it, but we can point back to that.
In order to be granted that approval.
Yeah, I just want them to think that they have the note, therefore the principal is required to approve it. Um, but I think that's fine, so long as we make clear that that's not a guarantee. But that's the start. When you bring in the note that initiates the process, that we will then review.
Excellent point. Uh, Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one, one quick question I have, and I apologize, Mrs. Roy. I should have brought this up early when you and I would, we were all been yak yak in the last few days. But, uh, in the first paragraph where it says, uh, gators and bandanas will not be allowed. Uh, I'm going to make an assumption, or does it need to be in there? That, uh, like for after-school activities and such, you know, sports and clubs and music, that if masks are needed, it has to be a mask and not the gator or the bandana?
The concern was the, uh, multiple layers and that, uh, the high, high majority of, uh, felt that the most of the gators and bandannas were single layers. Well, we know that there are a few exceptions to that. Um, the committee felt that, um, the majority of them were a single layer and therefore not under the policy of multiple layers in the first paragraph.
So is anyone participating, you know, in an after-school activity or such is going to need a regular mask?
Yes. If they're, if they're, you know, obviously on school grounds or in our buildings or on school transportation, any of that, in that second paragraph.
Right. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Anyone else have any comments, questions, concerns over this policy? Uh, back to you, Shannon.
Can I just follow up on the, the gator and the bandana thing? There's also been research showing that they are less effective, right, in preventing the spread of COVID because, like, if they're not tight on the bottom, the right air flows out. So I think, because I don't want someone to come in and say, oh, well, you know, my gator has two layers. So can I have this or my bandana, right? There's a reason in addition to the number of layers why we're requiring face masks.
Yeah. All true.
No, agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you, everyone, uh, for your input.
Mr. Chairman, we, uh, approved the policy E B F C A on face coverings with the adjustment, uh, to the second sentence in the, uh, fourth paragraph that Ms. Roy read.
District will have mask available for staff as needed, which is what we do.
Correct.
I think that's the fifth paragraph. Am I counting wrong?
Nope, you're correct.
I, I, yeah, I would.
That's a scribbler's error. I just want to make sure that Kate gets it right. I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair, hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Gunther.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral?
Yes.
Mary Wait?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
May I confirm it's paragraph four and not paragraph five?
Paragraph five. I can't count.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, everyone, on that. Uh, next up, superintendent's update, uh, Dr. Gifford.
The only thing I will add is
The only thing I will add is we've still continued with negotiations. As you know, we'll be updating the committee tonight in executive session, negotiations with DEA about returning to school plan. And Mr. Kylie let us know that I think it was October 18th, 12 to three, Mr. Kylie, for a flu clinic again, uh, high school.
Correctly, uh, the Board of Health is putting that together. They have asked us for, um, you know, permission to use the high school on that Sunday, 12 to three on the 18th. And, um, we've granted that permission and I think they'll be publicizing it shortly.
And that's it.
Very great. And, uh, next up, report of the chair. I do not have anything um, other than we are confirmed, uh, for, uh, next week with the joint meeting, uh, Dr. Gifford?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Anyone else? For the good of the committee and community, uh, Dr. Jenkins?
I just want to let everyone know that, um, the DEA met. Um, and I think the, the consensus was that this year we are going to be unable to do, um, our spelling bee. Um, so we're, we're making some plans to, to maybe, you know, do a direct ask to help support, to continue to support our teachers. So I think the needs are going to be more than ever. Um, and we may try to do some event in the, um, uh, spring. So I just asked everyone to be on the, uh, the lookout, uh, for that.
Great. Thank you, Shannon.
Chris?
Yes, Mr. Nunes?
Just, uh, you know, if you happen to go by the, uh, high school stadium this weekend, uh, you are going to see, uh, the band percussion and color guard. They're starting their ritual shows this weekend, uh, with U S bands and such. So, you know, Friday afternoon, Saturday afternoon, Sunday afternoon, I understand. And so everything's going to start kicking off. So just be aware.
Hmm, that's great. No, thank you for sharing that. All right, our next regularly scheduled meeting, I don't have it in front of me. Does anyone have the date of the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee?
October 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. It's October 5th and safe to say at 6:30. Thank you, everyone. At this time, uh, chair will entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn into executive session for the purposes for, for, uh, administration to provide an update with respect to collective bargaining with union personnel, not to reconvene.
Oh, wow.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. Roll call, please, Ms. Gunther.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral?
Yes.
Mary Wait?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Uh, meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a wonderful night to everyone watching.
Thank you. See you on the flip.